Seven oh three, according to Big Ben. Today is Thursday, June 27th, 2024. Time of the meeting is 7:00 PM. This meeting is on Zoom. Meeting ID is eight five one one three zero eight seven three four two. Passcode is nine two five four seven five. And we have a location if you have to. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants on Zoom who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. Note, this meeting has been recorded for live broadcast and televised replay by Bourne TV. Anyone else present who is audio or visually recording, please acknowledge at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. First agenda item would be the meeting minutes of June 13th, 2024. Anybody had a chance to review them?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes as presented to us.
Motion made to accept. Second by John Duggan. John Duggan. I didn't see a nameplate on this. I'm only kidding. Only kidding. Any other comments from the board on that? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? We're gonna have to do a roll call because Dan's on Zoom.
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
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 Yes. Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is an application for amendment of a site plan review special permit. Special permit number 10 of 2018A. Eighteen Foster Howard Road, map 44, parcel 56. The application is to add an access drive to Route 28A.
Oh, two Williamses first.
I skipped right over it.
Hi. Chris, I'm Al Quaglary from Foster Howard Road.
Hi, Al.
I'm the owner. In 2020, I built eighteen. I got the approvals for two buildings. And I put them up and they were completed in 2020.
Al, can I hold you up for a minute? Because of our agenda, I have to make a quick, ask for a quick motion that we take number three out of order.
So moved.
Favor a second?
Second.
I can all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to?
All right, go ahead.
So, I completed the two buildings in 2020, and I received the approvals to have an entrance on Foster Howard Road. It's an impressive road that's barely finished, but we were able to connect up to it. The issue I'm having isn't really with the road. I can get out there fine. But when you take Foster Howard and you exit to 28A, the angle heads you towards Falmouth. So when I'm in my 30-ton trailer with the dump truck, I can't make the turn to get out to 28 without going in the opposite lane for a good amount of time and then coming back into the lane because of how Foster Howard is configured as it enters 28A. So to alleviate that, we've proposed the entrance onto 28A that will allow for a safe turn out onto Otis Rotary and up 28.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one. So would you just be exiting there?
Um, I'd, no, I'd prefer to enter also. It's a hard swing going into Foster Howard.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm familiar with Foster Howard. There were a couple of questions that came up during the whole process of reviewing your application and the man who built next to you about the drainage on Foster Howard, about the fact that there's a development directly across that was concerned about appearance, but also traffic that would impede their exit. I think you can see the exit there.
Yeah.
And I just wondered, that's all in the minutes that Jen sent to us? That was 2018, 2019? I was wondering if anyone remembers this because some of us, I was on the board. Dan, you were on the board. Do you remember all this? Not even listening.
I remember a lot of it, but not word board.
No, but, you know, and the other question that came up was, I, we, and I don't know how it was resolved, whether Foster Howard is a private road or is part of it private?
It was resolved.
Who's responsible and what was decided?
It is a town road. And if, I believe Mr. Quaglary met with the DPW and he actually created drainage because that road used to flood.
Oh, I know.
He used to, he created drainage under the direction of the DPW and they allowed him to do that. And it was more for himself, but it also helped out the town that that road wasn't flooded.
Absolutely. That's good.
But yes, it's, it's a town road and I knew that at the time. I wasn't on the board when you folks reviewed this originally, but yeah, I remember that being a town.
So is there any way to just improve the entrance and exit of the existing road?
Is, I believe the DPW looked at it and I don't believe the DPW or the town has enough property to straighten out that huge angle, which is probably close to 90?
Yeah, I know. It's a tough turn. But you're also so close to the rotary there, it just concerns me. There was a reason that we didn't want to do it in the first place. And as far as I can tell, those reasons kind of still exist, but.
Anybody else?
I, I think the safety is, and I did go back and read a lot of that, which, and then I went to the site, I looked at it, I drove out both ways. I, I think if we're utilizing that space, we have to come up with, because the town's not going to do it right. And safety is the first, first issue. So how do we make that work within the parameters of what we can do? And I, I think that it's going to move forward, you know, that access so we can leave it unsafe or we could, you know, try to work and try to figure it out so that it'll work for everybody. That's my thought. I mean, what do you guys think?
I just was, in the aspect of the safety, 30-10 trailer is not, it's not a matchbox. And if he has to swing out to the other side of the road, and has anybody seen the way people drive lately?
Yeah.
So he's a moving target. So I think, I think accessing that access and ingress and egress that he wants would be better for public safety.
I agree.
Because that truck's not going to move.
Right. So how, and, and you know, and the way people drive, they don't expect it to come out. They think that, I saw people walking down, they were on vacation, holding hands in the middle of the road on that road. I mean, people don't look and especially there, they think it's, in the summer, it's, I think it's dangerous. So I agree. I think we should try to, to work together and see what we can do.
It's also very close to the rotary exit, which is concerning. Does, and it doesn't concern you that there's the exit from the development across that has to, that would be almost directly across from that?
Well, I know, I saw that too. So that's what I'm saying is maybe how it's presented right now isn't the way, isn't perfect. So can, maybe we should talk about it and, you know, maybe we can rework it so that, and take another look at it. I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Am I right that the DOT will have the final say on this with curb cut?
Yes.
Sightline distances and speed? After, the normal process with Mass DOT is they have to get town approval first and then they submit to District Five Mass DOT and then they either get the permit or they don't.
And they would take those things into consideration and grant?
Oh yeah, they take everything into consideration.
That line of sight part is really important.
All right.
Right. All right. So then, so then that's the question. If then, if Mass DOT takes it to the next step, do we let them figure out how it's going to be safest or do we do that first and then run it by them?
We would approve what the proponent is planning and then that plan would be sent to Mass DOT through the planning office and along with Mr. Quaglary's application.
Right. But my question is, we, we don't want to trust that Mass DOT is going to revise the plan that way that we, the way that we would like it as a town. So does it make sense for us as a town to sort of, you know, go look at the space and, or, I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying. Do we hold up the process? Does it matter?
I'm just trying to understand why, what, what would you want to change? I mean, it's a very short distance from 28A to his property. It's a driveway access. I can't see.
I was trying to, to consider what Liz had said.
Right. Okay.
That's what, that's where I was coming from. But if you're fine with it, then I'm fine with it. So, and if you're, you know.
I just look at it, we have many, many intersections in town where driveways are across the street from another side road. And they're just as busy at 28A, if not busier. And I can think of County Road, Barlow's Landing Road and everything else, so.
But it's not usually a mix of industrial and residential.
Well, Barlow's Landing, there is a mixture in several places. Colony Insulation or Colony Storage and stuff, CMS, all those different businesses there. They're all a mixture of houses on one side of the street and business on the other side. So I see it in a lot of different places. But going back to what Catherine said, I think we have to look at the safety of it. And the safety right now with Foster Howard Road coming on, on that angle to 28A to me is an accident waiting to happen.
Right.
I've seen too many other vehicles, not from his property, but also that utilize Foster Howard Road. They've come out on the 28A and they have to go all the way into the other lane.
Right.
To make that turn.
Right.
And they're much smaller than him with a dump truck, as he said, and a trailer.
I was in and out of there probably six times over the past few weeks and every single time I struggled with getting, yeah.
In addition to, it's more like 135-degree turn.
Okay.
There's a 10% steepness.
Yeah.
So the dump truck starts at such an angle and in addition to having to take that turn, you have to navigate the clutch to get out there and make that turn. So, you know, going out left is a breeze.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, that entrance, if, you know, I'd be willing to accept like no left turn out of there. It's really the gentle right-hand turn that would be making to the Otis Rotary.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
No reason to go out that way and turn left.
That's why I was asking about the in and out, you know? Because that way you don't have to cross the road, you wouldn't be blocking the, you know, the people coming out of the other. I honestly don't know how busy that development is, but there were quite a few people here during the initial meeting. Not yours necessarily, but the, I can't remember the number.
And no one showed up for my meeting.
Yeah, I think by that time it had kind of, you know, well, they knew that we weren't going to have an access to 28A, I think. They had expressed themselves and I think they kind of let it go from there.
I just think this would be a great improvement, that I'd be able to gently turn out onto 28A to head to the Otis Rotary in lieu of what's now very dangerous for me and somebody else. And, you know, as far as taking a left-hand turn in there, I'm already, I'd already have been accessing 28A from the set of lights. So it's a good distance, a blinker's on, you have plenty of room to navigate and take a turn into there. So.
I think the DOT would ultimately make the decision about the safety and the curb cut.
Absolutely.
The swing and all that. So to your point and to Liz's, I think, no matter what we sent them, they would make the final determination.
Absolutely. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
No, I was just gonna, just what John said about, you know, DOT going up to that level.
Right.
They're coming down with the state guidelines, they're coming down with the line of sight.
Right.
Safety's a priority issue.
Right. Don, David?
I take your point about the safety and I don't disagree. My request is that we minimize the impact on the forest cover between you and 28A. And I'm looking at the grading and on both sides, there's no, there's no limit of work line close to that curb line on the, let's call it the northwest side and the southeast side. So I'm suggesting that we put a limit of work, maybe your engineer makes those side slopes behind the curb as steep as possible so that the limit of work line can be as close to your curb as possible. On the southeast side, the right-hand side, as you look at the, the plan here, you've got the trench drain runoff being carried underground to the drainage basin. I'd like to see that pipe pulled as close to the curb line as possible. I think the clearing on the right-hand side is probably going to be more than 25 feet. So I, I don't know what DOT is going to say about sightlines, but if there's good material there, if there's good sizable trees, I'd like to maintain, I'd like to save them by pulling that drain line close to the curb line and emptying into the drainage basin, so to speak, at the head of the basin, rather than the base of the basin.
So you'd like to see it up here?
Uh, there. Sorry. On the right-hand side, right under your finger. No, 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 on the right-hand, uh, let me point here. This drain line is draining, the trench drain is picking up all your drainage coming from what it looks like right about here. I guess that catch basin is still functional and I'm not sure where it drains to, but that's, that's a question.
So everything is caught here?
Good.
With this pipe over to this basin?
That's fine then. This will catch all of this and will be conveyed to the drainage basin. I'd like it to be as close to this as possible.
Yeah. Actually, I should take it from here and.
Yes, right. Just show it to your, you know, tell your engineer and then I'd like to see a limit of work line, minimize the grading and see a limit of work line that's as close as, so a limit of work line as close as possible to the driveway, just to minimize the impact. DOT may have something to say about sightlines, but I'd like to get our two cents in, same here, that here's some grading lines. And sometimes the engineers grade it like this, you know what I mean? Eight percent. I'd like to see them grade it at 20% and get back to as quickly as possible and here's a limit of work line. Follow? So what I want to do is compress the destruction zone as much as possible.
Got it, Chris.
And I'd like to make those conditions.
And I don't know, Doc, if you were talking about the trench drain?
The trench drain.
But that's going to have a lot to do with Mass DOT because they have a certain part of property on either side that they.
Right-of-way, you mean?
Right-of-way, that they control. So they, they may not go along with that.
With a trench drain at all?
With the, they may want the trench drain there.
Upslope or upslope?
Upslope more.
Right. That'll be fine. The concept is still the same.
Right.
Is to, don't have that, don't empty into the, at the berm. Enter, empty the water at the head of the detention basin. The head meaning closest to the driveway. We can send a sketch.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
Just that I don't have complete faith in Mass DOT, but, you know.
Well, I don't have any.
They've made some bad decisions as well.
Made some bad decisions. You're not going to see any bridges in this town for 20 years. So that's Mass DOT.
Can I jump in with a question then?
Go ahead.
That is Mass DOT and I don't know where we started in. If we, do we look at the specs for Mass DOT that they, you know, that they would require for this so that we can ensure that we meet them right now so that we're not causing extra work?
What it would do, what would happen is if Mass DOT approves it, we would get something back from Mass DOT with what, their comments.
Okay.
And their comments may or may not coincide with what we've decided.
Okay.
Ultimately, they have the final say because it's a curb cut to their road.
Okay. And do we know what the standard spec is for them or do they change it all the time? Is it a particular?
It's changed all the time.
Okay.
Because 28A is probably scheduled like a schedule C or D road with limited traffic, whereas MacArthur Boulevard is probably a B road.
Right.
Twenty-five, 495 is an A. You know, they, they do it with different grades.
Right. So that's what I was saying, if we could initially meet those specs, then it would be, but if you're saying that that's not, you know, they're going to do what they want anyways, then we.
Right. It's similar to that development that was approved off of San and Kylie with those three or four houses.
Yep.
On the corner.
Whatever. But it's just, Mass DOT gave them the approval and there wasn't much more that they granted us as far as modifications, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on this? Okay. Where the, what do you, you have it, John?
I don't know if anybody has.
Dan, do you have any questions? Comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, John.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed this project and the applicant, Rocco Realty Two LLC, proposes to add access onto Route 28A located at 18 Foster Howard Road, map 44, parcel 56 for the existing commercial office, warehouse and storage use. The proposed project is located in the B2 district. Mr. Chairman, based on the planning board's review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses and the record of the proceedings, the planning board has found the project is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw, paragraph 1230, 1233C, site plan review special permit and 1331 special permit criteria. Site plan review special permit number 10-2018A meets the criteria for a special permit of the following. A, pedestrian vehicular flow and safety has been met. B, the utilities and other public services are adequate. C, impacted areas to the natural environment will be revegetated. D, impact upon nearby developed premises is minimized and commercial abutters may experience minor impacts such as noise during construction. E, the proposed access point is visually compatible with the surroundings. F, the project is not located in a water resource district. G, there is no impact upon the town's needs for year-round housing. Therefore, I move to approve site plan review special permit number 10-2018A in accordance with the following findings and conditions. Findings. One, the applicant proposes to add access onto Route 28A at 18 Foster Howard Road, map 44, parcel 56. This is an application for an amendment to previously approved site plan review special permit number 10-2018. Two, the parcel consists of 26,958 square feet, 0.62 acres in a B2 district. The current use is warehouse, storage, and there are two commercial buildings on the parcel. It is not located in a water resource district or Zone Two wellhead protection area. Two, the application is being reviewed specifically pursuant to paragraphs 1230, 1233C, site plan review special permit, 1244 amendments and 1331 special permit criteria. Four, the application is accompanied by a site plan by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC dated 5/23/24 and titled Proposed Curb Cut Plan. Conditions. This permit is subject to all rules, regulations and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. Two, all findings, terms and conditions of the previous approval of SPR/SP number 10-2018 dated 2/2019 shall remain in effect. Curb cut permit from Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Provide the fire department with an emergency vehicle access plan, including a swept path analysis. This decision shall be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds and a copy returned to the planning board. Do we want to add an additional condition?
Uh, yeah. Jen's got it, I think.
Thank you, Chairman. Grade at 20% or as determined by Mass DOT.
Can I, I just have, I have a couple of bulleted points, whether there are one condition or several. Yeah, grade, grade as appropriate to save the maximum number of existing trees. What I mean is a little steeper rather than a flat grade. Relocate the drain line from the trench drain as close to the curb, east side curb as possible. Outfall to be at the top of the drainage basin, close to the east side curb. Assuming DOT approves it, notify the planning department when the driveway is laid out so that we can see a limit of work line and a limit of clearing line for final review before construction. Thanks.
You good with that, Mr. Quaglary?
I am.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion by John. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, any other comments from the board, from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, it's a roll call, John? Yes. Elizabeth?
No.
Yes.
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 Dan?
Yes.
Yes. You have six.
I think so, yes.
With Dan?
Yes.
Okay. You're all set?
Thanks so much.
Once you get response back from, once you get a response from her and you get it to Mass DOT, make sure we get it ASAP so you can hopefully get going.
I will.
Before the snow flies.
I'll keep you posted. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we'll go back to item number two. This is an application for a waiver of site plan review, 042024W. Two Williams Ave, map 44.2, parcel 21. The application is a request of a waiver of site plan review to open a retail pet shop with an existing commercial building. I am sorry that I skipped over you before. I just missed it and jumped right over, so.
Maintenance, right? Patient is.
Okay.
So we're happy we're here.
Okay. So you want to go ahead and give us an overview of what's going on?
Yes. So we have been working closely with the state to open a pet shop and we've been working closely with the, with the Department of Agriculture of the state. And we were also working with the town. So we had initially seek a kennel license because we thought we might need this, but we went to the board and they advised us that that wasn't necessary at the time this was probably being said a month ago. And they said that we should just work with the state. And so they advised us not to go into the kennel license because they didn't, they stated that we're writing, changing anything in the structure, adding anything on. We checked, you know, the zoning and that everything was, you know, been okay with the town. And we have been working with the state all along. Most recently, we were invited by the state to seek an occupancy permit. And this is when we got through all of these reviews. And then now we're at the planning department, which is, I believe, with you guys. And they suggested to us that we could site plan review, and so this apply and we're right here today.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Copeland from the planning, explain a little bit what's going on?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So it, as they, the applicant said, it was about a year ago, that they applied for a kennel license and then they actually withdrew that application because their, their business model actually is a, classified as a pet store for retail. So it would fall under the zoning bylaw under retail and not a kennel. So the pet store is featuring only puppies of Golden Doodle or similar mix. And so they withdrew that and then the, they did apply for the occupancy permit and so the planning office, we put that on hold because it, the square footage of the building is under 1,600 square feet, so it is triggered under retail as requiring site plan review. So therefore, they've applied for the waiver. They do not have any exterior site changes to the property at all. So they're only changing the inside of the building.
Are you taking the whole building or just a portion of it?
Just a portion of it, for the outside of the building.
Okay. Where the taxi company was before?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Catherine?
Will you eventually, you just said that you're not going to build anything outside, but in the future, is that in the plan at all, to extend outside at all? No? Okay.
No, not at all.
And then inside, will you be, you know, boarding dogs for extended periods of time?
No, no.
And that is why we didn't do the kennel application because they won't be boarded for extended periods.
Okay.
Their, their young puppies, they get to us about eight weeks, we don't work with the breeders for a while. And so the state is aware, we're not going to be keeping dogs for long, it's going to be a very quiet operation, very shakeover.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else from the board?
Just tell me a little more about your operation. I, there's no, I don't see any sort of holding spaces. Somebody comes in and, where are the puppies? I, I guess we want to understand how long the puppies are in the store, who are the breeders you have a relationship with, presumably you have a relationship with a vet. Just describe, sell me on the operation.
Yeah, so, so what we do is we do our breeders that breed the puppies and we get the whole litter, the way we're kind of different than our regular pet shop is we have a long-term relationship with the breeders and we get the whole litter. And so a lot of the customers that we have, they know us, they know the reputation that we have in providing, you know, high-quality puppies that are, you know, well bred and taking care of. And so we've been working for the last, you know, few months directly with the state in which they, they know where of, of everything that we're doing. We had to go through them to, to be objective, so we have to have a vet that will be able to come in, you know, inspect the puppies. We don't expect to have dogs at all times, but under the pet shop, you know, guideline, we are allowed to do that. But at this point, what we're reverting to do is have puppies when they're born, they're going to be born, yeah, and then after, because legally, you know, they have to eat weeks. So we get them around, you know, eight, nine weeks, and at that point is when we can provide them after they've been inspected by the vet.
Which we have, we have to vet them.
Yeah. So we, this has been kind of a process that we've been, it's been kind of ongoing, that's what we're doing with the state, it's been quite a lengthy process, but we finally kind of reached the final stages, and this is where, you know, you guys are coming in now with the occupancy permit. So I hope that answers the question.
Part of it. So your relationship with the breeder, and they have puppies that are just born, so presumably eight weeks later, they can be weaned and moved out. Is there a point, have you ever had a situation where one dog just never sells?
No.
All right. So you've never had an issue with a backend dog, so to speak?
No. I, I think it's, I mean, it beats to the, you know, the quality of the breeders and work that we do, these are highly swaddled, you know, after puppies. We own, we do, we're breeders ourselves. And so we've been, we've bred in the past, we have a network of, you know, breeders that we work with internally.
And we have a great relationship with them. We take care of them, you know, we're close with them, so it's not like we just found and we use them. It's a close relationship.
All right, thank you.
We trust them.
They're like small, you know, breeders, not a big, you know, operation type breeders. We only do the doodle mixes, that's what we're into, we love that kind of breeders.
Thank you. Catherine?
So my question is, the, you said you're doodle mixes, and I love doodles, I love them, so, but doodle mixes, right? So they're not, so my question is, are they, they're not AKC certified then because they're a mixed breed, correct?
Right, we're not AUC.
All right. So are the breeders that you're contracting with, are they local? Are they in New England? Where, can you tell us like where they're from? Like what states? Just curious.
They're pretty much like southern Pennsylvania, Maryland border, and these are people that we know personally.
Right, right. No, no, that's, that's fine. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand when we're bringing a business in, you know, to the community, what, what are we, what are we selling, right? So, you know, and so that was where I was going with that. So my question is, a lot of times with, you know, puppies and dogs, that's why they do the certification, and I'm, I'm absolutely not against mixed breeds, I have them myself, but how do you ensure that that bloodline is safe and you're ha, you're, you know, you're selling genetically sound dogs?
Yeah, we genetically have them.
Okay.
So they're health tested.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so, yeah, we, we do ensure, and then, and then the thing too is that we make sure that the breeders, we don't work with anybody that's, that hasn't been working for a long time, not very familiar with the problem.
And they all get checked out before they come, they get two vet checks before they come, plus they get checked by our vet during their mix-up, so.
Yeah, so Massachusetts is very strict on, you know, pet shop licensing, so you have to buy by, there's various rules, like before the puppies come, they have to be vet checked by the state, by a licensed USDA vet.
Right.
And then when, when they come to us, they within 24 hours, 48 hours.
Forty-eight after they're.
And they have to be quarantined, and then we have to have the vet come into the pet shop, and they have to then examine the puppies. So essentially, the puppies need, you know, twice, but then the other rule too is when they come to us, they need to be also inspected by a vet tech, so somebody that's knowledgeable in, in the puppies and, you know, to be, you know, aware, conscious of any issues that should arise during transport, you know.
And before they come, they also have to have the puppy certified, so that's certified that they are.
Are puppies in the building overnight? Are puppies in the building overnight?
Yeah, so we have cameras in the building, and we have people who are tied up in the morning to check on them as well.
So is that shown on your draw, is that shown on your drawing?
Is what shown, the camera?
No, no, the, the puppy kennels, the overnight facilities.
Yeah, yeah, they're, it's long.
It's on there.
It's a long.
It's the long, right angle reception.
Right in the middle.
Looks like one.
Right, you are. Sorry.
It took me a minute, yeah, I, I know, I know what you're saying.
Understood, thank you.
Looks like you got five kennels, yeah. Chris, you got a question? From the audience, sir? Yeah, I'll have to have you come up to the lectern and speak.
It's your name.
And I'll have to ask you to state your name.
Jeffrey Hamilton. I'm the owner of the property directly across the street, the tree and landscape company that works there. My, my concern is the puppy's going to be contained on the property, or, you know, I'm just concerned about walking the neighborhood and walking across the street and doing what dogs do.
Yeah, they won't be outside.
I, just for clarification, I adopted a dog in Sandwich, and it was a rescue out of Alabama. At that age, they keep them inside because they don't want them exposed to anything. And it's, as they said, it's six to eight weeks, they get examined by several different vets, and they get a certain number of shots before they leave the facility, and that's required under Massachusetts law. Which would be my next question to you folks, do you have your state license yet? Or do you have to wait for this approval?
Well, the state approved it, yes, we just need the occupancy permit to come back and give it. So she approved it, she just said, I need the occupancy before I can give you the license.
And I, I want to be completely transparent, although I understand that it is a concern. I think, you know, we're all neighbors, we wouldn't want to do anything to the neighborhood or to the area that's going to cause any issues for anybody. Like if I was living here, I wouldn't want any dog walking around barking or anything like that. So we're going to be very, very cautious or just very diligent in terms of making sure that everything's running, you know, well. We will have staff in the building to ensure that the puppies are taken care of. So we'll have some, we know, we know puppies walking outside, and that's one of the things that the state has, we work, we have worked with the state on that, and we know that state, so, you know. So the puppies have to be contained inside of the building, and we don't expect it to be there for long. Like we, you know, most of these puppies have been before they come.
So I, I guess just as a follow-up, it's not really a true pet store then, it's, or it's as a retail shop. It's, it's a breeding operation.
The breeding is done someplace else, it's a transfer station, basically. They're bred someplace else, they're brought here, and then they go out to whoever's picking them up. So it's not a regular pet shop and it's not a regular breeding ground.
And, and during the overnights, they did say nobody's there until 5:00 AM?
I know the other place that I went and I purchased my dog from, they had a camera system, as these folks said, that they had, they keep an eye on them, and the pets are usually only left for about five hours at the most, and then somebody else is in there.
Well, that's a great question then, actually, if you don't mind if I jump in. How many hours do you, will they be, what is your plan for staff in terms of, you know, end of the night? You said 5:00 AM. How long will they be left alone?
Yeah, so we plan to have somebody in the building from about 5:00 to about 9:00 in the evening. So Sarah's father lives close by as well.
So he'll come and pop in too.
He can come in, sure there'd be an issue. Any, any place, I mean, because like I said, we, we've bred in our homes, we, you know, worked with dogs for a long time. Usually we're not renting the puppies overnight, but we have cameras and we do want to keep an eye on them. But these puppies will be contained within, you know, within a unit, and they're all glass, like so you can see through, you know, we have to have, and they're going to be very well taken care of while they're in the, in the building. But we've made sure that when we work with the state, the state, there's, you know, a lot of rules that we have to buy by. We don't plan on having, you know, a lot of puppies at once, and we're sure we manage any sort of, you know, issues. But as long as there's any puppies here, we're going to make sure that we're going to be there and have people going in and taking care of the dogs.
And we have a lot of, you know, it's a lot different than that. In the package, you are already.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just want to say, Mr. Hamilton, while you're here, I was here when you first came before this board and you built your place on Williams Ave, and you did everything you said you were going to be, and it looks great.
Thank you very.
Thank you very much for doing business in Bourne. I know you have a bigger operation on 151, but.
That's just the main office over there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? Comments? Questions? Nobody else from the audience? Okay, I have to have somebody read that. Doc, would you mind reading it? And she's got a couple of notes on there.
Application for a waiver too.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the application for a waiver of site plan review, and the applicant, George Gavalo, proposes a change of use to retail sales pet shop under 1,600 square feet gross square floor area, and also fewer than 200 vehicle trip ends per average business day. There are no proposed changes to the exterior footprint of the existing building. This will be located at Two Williams Avenue, identified on assessor's map, 44.2 parcel 21. The project is located in a B2 district and is allowed use under section 2220. The proposed project was accompanied by a set of floor plans developed by Canvas dated April 24th, 192024. Mr. Chairman, based on planning board review of the exhibits, testimony of the applicant, experts, witnesses, and the record of the proceedings, the planning board finds that the request for a waiver of site plan review is consistent with the Town of Bourne zoning bylaw, section 1235, and the proposed change of use of the structure does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site or to abutting properties and structures. Therefore, I move to approve the waiver of site plan review application number 032024W in accordance with the following. This project is subject, one, this project is subject to all the rules, regulations, and bylaws of the Town of Bourne. Number two, all work authorized under this approval shall be in accordance with the application supportive materials, testimony of the owner and its representative. Number three, defer to the Health Department compliance for the sewer system and permits. Number four, defer to the Fire Department for adequacy of emergency access and all Tier One documents as outlined in the building code shall be provided to the Bourne Fire Department. Number five, signage requires a sign permit by the building department. And number six, only the unit on, on the left side, Unit A. This permit applies to that. That's the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I second that. Second by James. Any other comments? Questions? From the audience? Nobody? Okay, roll call. John?
Yes.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Yes.
Catherine, yes. Dan?
Yes.
Thank you. You're all set, folks. Good luck. Make sure you get your permits into us. Once, once you get everything finalized with the state, make sure you get it back to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for doing business in Bourne. Welcome.
Oh, I think they froze.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, thank you.
Nothing else before the board? Make motion to adjourn? Can I hear a motion?
Aye.
Okay, Liz. Liz made the motion, John seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. The.